Okay, ready for all? Okay, welcome to the July 16th regular meeting in the town of Niqwa. First order of business, we approve the agenda. Be it resolved that we hereby approve the regular meeting. Agenda for July 16th, 2024, moved by Counselor Potter, seconded by Counselor Costin Chuck. All in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, be it resolved that we hereby approve the minutes of the regular meeting and public meeting until June 18th as circulated. So moved by Counselor Nadeau, seconded by Counselor Sisley. Any questions? All in favor, opposed, carried. Only got a couple minutes here, so maybe we'll start off with some council reports. Counselor Potter.
Speaking to recreation, and I don't know if I can tell them that yet. This Saturday in Niqwa, we're having an event that was highlighted in Travel Manitoba's Top 10 Things to Do this Week as a Destination Place, Niqwa Super Saturday. Everything starts at 10:00 a.m. Arts Forward has an art market, live art display, with more mentions being painted throughout town to add to all the color and fibers. The Filipino Heritage Recycled Dresses, those are the ones from the Heritage Day, will be on display in the art gallery. The Co-op is serving up road burgers and Niqwa Tourism will be on Burg Street with their Midday Street Party full of live music. The Townwide Scavenger Hunt will be coinciding with all the day's events. The prizes being handed out during the Rescanned Build Canada Day event, which will begin at 2:30 at the Flats with horse-drawn wagon rides, kids barrel training rides, bouncy castles, live music, and a fundraiser barbecue for supper. And then there'll be a short break from 6:00 to 8:00. Have I got the times right? Sorry. And then another band will take the stage in preparation for the fireworks display at dusk. The Market Lawrence Home is also holding their garden tours that same day from 9:30 till 3:00 p.m. Admission is $20 for the tour and you can purchase your tickets at the Market Lawrence Home for this fun event. So this Saturday must be an exciting time in Niqwa.
Hey, anyone else? Elsewhere?
Yeah, on June 19th, we had a WMRL meeting and just to let you know, it just highlighted how our new librarian, supposed to start today, Caitlin Henderson. I haven't had a chance to drop in to meet her yet. But also just to highlight that the staff at the Niqwa Library are so skilled. For example, Jules, she designs stickers, shirts, and hats that the WMRL is using throughout the whole region. Again, at our library this summer, we have our summer reading program. We also have local club Nintendo Switch Club and Comic Creations that are going on, as well as our book club meeting monthly. So lots happening at our local library. In another area, Westlake Employment, just some information to share with you. The Training and Employment Services has actually put a hold on the referrals for the healthcare aid program, so it's paused right now. And the reason for that is because they're receiving feedback that a lot of graduates in the healthcare aid program are having difficulty getting related jobs. So we've really saturated that market, I think. So now we're shifting to other markets to train people in and to support them. We also, our Manitoba Youth Job Creation Youth Engagement Leader, we weren't able to find anyone this year because no one applied that met criteria. So if someone was interested, they still can apply to see if we can sell us that a bit. Westlake Employment Skills and Services, you go to to apply. And Flora DeLeez, our director's there, she can help get you in touch with the right people. But basically, you have to be 18 years old and have a license. And you have to be going to post-secondary schooling in order to qualify. But we still need someone as far as by the last turn. So if anyone's interested, it's something we're still looking to recruit to help get those jobs. That's everything.
Okay, maybe one last one. Counselor.
July 16th, 2:30 p.m. The County Council Committee met as a larger group with some of us around with councils. We have talked at earlier meeting that there were some conversations regarding funding and operations of that facility. And we had a very constructive conversation with a number of other counselors as well beyond the committee members. Today, with some representation from the province who oversees that, has ultimate say over that heritage facility. And it's starting a process, it's gonna take some time, but it's a good first step today.
Okay, maybe we'll shift gears here and go into our public hearing. So be it resolved that we do now open this public hearing at 7:05 to hear representation to variation application, V03-2024 of Gary Tully. Moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Counselor Costin Chuck. All in favor, opposed, carried. All right, Scott.
So the variation number for this application is V03-20.4N. The current owners of the property is Gary in Lake Tully and the applicant is Meg Prince of Precision Land Solutions. Variation proposal is to intensify drainage by installing tile drainage on the subject property, approximately 214.6 acres of vacant land within the town of Niqwa boundaries in conjunction with town of Niqwa bylaw 3210-22, which is the lot grading and drainage by law. Current area affected is south half of 41515 west. And the reason we need to be in support of it is to allow the installation of drainage tile, which would enable a portion of land in the property to be farmed.
Okay.
Sorry. The notices have been circulated well within the 14-day timeline to the property owners. And our office hasn't received really any comments, concerns. There was only, there was one. I can't remember the date exactly. They just wanted a letter of why it was going to be drained. And according to the proposal, it's just going to be drained directly north into the creek.
Into the creek, yeah. Okay, any questions, Scott? Pretty straightforward. Todd, do you have any other comments that you want to make?
No, it's the last to go through the primary process with the province and MIT. You guys approve it, so everything will be done by the book.
Okay, perfect. If nothing else, be it resolved that we do now adjourn this public hearing at 7:06. Moved by Counselor Gerard, seconded by Counselor Potter. All in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. Next one. Any other council reports?
July 4th, the State Trust Fund Committee met. Unfortunately, myself and Counselors Sisley were not able to attend, but I did get the information from them. The market value estimated 24th in the Niqwa District Health Center is $1,324,232,000. Market values estimated 24 Country Meadows Personal Parole, $1,441,41. Disbursement amounts for 2024 Niqwa District Health Center is $62,575. Country Meadows Personal Parole is $9,629. The distribution of the funds for the Niqwa District Health Center are, now forgive me if I don't say these right, but, an AccuVane Finder at $6,674. A Hover Map and Car for $6,194. A COVID ABPI kit with Doppler is $1,241. An Oook Snow medical bed, three of them, $34,467. The distribution for Country Meadows Personal Parole will go towards a new ladder scanner at a cost of $25,000. And another report from the Hand, just a couple of things that is coming up. July, our 50/50 starts. The 18th of July is Scooter Day. Brown and Mobility, RCMP, TuneUp Station, and Obstalb Course. Fun, fun. The 22nd is a casino chip trip, sorry. The Brief Discussion Group still meets every Monday from 2:00 to 4:00. Elks Matter Walking Club every Wednesday, weather permitting, at 1:00 p.m. And some highlights for August, August 15th. The Hand Fundraising Barbecue and 50/50 for August's help from 11:30 to 1:30 will be just in behind the Hand Office. Music in the Flats on August 22nd from 1:00 to 4:00. A few other things in September, where we'll get more information on that, I'll let you know. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselors Sisley.
So Niqwa School is having their Glow Swim Party this Friday, so this will be the second annual. It's from 9:30 to 11:30 p.m. It's $5 per entry, you have to be 10 years or older. Last year I was down there and they were lined up up Davidson Street Hill. It was just packed in there, it was just awesome to see, the kids had so much fun. They'll have snacks and drinks onsite for purchase for that. I know, I think Colleen touched on this last council meeting, but just because this is the last one before it'll happen, we're having the Rolling Barrage come through again on August 9th around 6:00 p.m. at the Niqwa Legion. For anybody that doesn't know what the Rolling Barrage is, it's an annual fundraiser in support of veterans, active-duty military, and first responders with PTSD. Come down to Brown Avenue in front of the Legion to chat, make some donations, view the bikes, and show your support, they would really appreciate it. Our EDO, Marilyn Cruz, taking applications for the Second Annual Children's Business Fair that will be held on August 15th. So last year, some of the participants, they had fridge magnets, bookmarks, keychains. We had candy floss, slime, vegetables, or painted rocks. Marilyn is still looking for a few more kids for vendors for that, so you can contact Marilyn at 204-476-7607.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll switch over to our Manager of Operations, Dino.
Thank you, Mayor Heather. I just want to update you, homework's done, completed the two F2 digs, so that'd be the extension of Visital Street. So the water of the sewer have been completed, the watering is actually charged, and we'll probably do a flush and set it in with the tube to ensure that everything's fine. Roadbed materials slightly deferred removal, so we can start the base course and start building our way up to the road and then we'll probably do the woodwork and do final landscaping. As far as that project is also due to press out to Manitoba, I do prefer electrical street lighting and all that servicing for the residential. So we're still making quotes on labs and also starting to contain all the wind out and completed as soon as possible. Our pothole patcher has gone back to Monday after a six-week stint in town. Unfortunately, we had a lot of rain days, it kind of prohibited its work, but nonetheless, we still completed a ton of potholes. I believe I brought in three semilobes of aggregate, so that's a few holes. With that being done, we'll probably get back in the street sweeping, which then we can have that followed by line cleaning. So appreciate the patience from the public and we'll get on that as soon as we can. Another project we fly through is the Two Billion Tree Program. So that would be the frontside trees that are staying in the cemetery with none of the mats taking care of it there. So those trees are slowly being plowed around town and get inward, they could see on the boulevard where they're going to die or just was never filled in with years. So those, you see staff going around throughout the months and just gradually plating all those trees. I believe there was about 500 that came in that round, so. And the residents are specific, if they really want a tree to add in, they can contact us here and we're best to try to sort out what one it is and set the size and we can do a plan fix. Only for the front boulevard, it cannot go on a backyard. We've been receiving complaints about bikes, scooters, e-bikes, e-scooters on sidewalks. We'd ask residents, I think the limiting size is it has to be 16-inch wheel or smaller for a child to ride their bike on the sidewalk. Anyone bigger than that, you have to ride in the street. Especially when you're motorized, so full mechanical scooter that's electric assist or bicycle, you're essentially a vehicle. Be on the street and you should be following him while you're biking along. Please move off the street and watch out for visitors actually walking on the sidewalks. We started work by the Park Lake Parkway, starting from the water treatment plant going to the bridge. That portion of the project was never included with the lake restoration, so we've got local contractors working on that right now. So we ask you to kind of just watch out, if there's a day when they're working on it, if you want to walk in even, that's fine. Be a little cautious of the pathways, the under construction will try to get all the aggregate so it's a fully possible pathway. And that should be completed in a little week or two. Catching stuff left here and on, we were unfortunately struck by lightning at the well sites again. So hummers and type staff are going through making repairs. This is an every other year kind of headache. Seems to be a little maintenance in that area.
How high does that go?
It's not that high. And I've talked with a lot of other people and it seems like our frequency of strikes is slightly higher than others that have these towers, they don't have future. We don't know, okay? Some conspiracy theories, some I can figure, other time all yours, but.
Just made a dummy tower slightly taller. They're not coating this, bro.
Yeah. Anyway, they make a beautiful mess when they do lots of rebuilding. So we're still finding, we find to fix one problem, then you seem to find another. We look at it, look at it, broke it, or fried it, so. We'll have to decide whether you file an insurance claim on that based on how much damage we've done. And because school's out, we've got all our summer staff now, so all the high school students that have started for the full doctorate students right now, and we're getting much done. And I believe I could commend all the staff, I think that everything looks really good when they're managing to keep up with the high growth rates of the grass. Cemetery looks great, parks look great, so good job. And another bright side, our MDUVR at the wastewater plant has sustained growth in the tank and we are slowly increasing flow through that tank now. So I think we're up to 50% flow. So it's slowly starting to work, we're taking tests. So the commissioning phase is back and forth with the O and R and the contractors. It's like I said, it's optimistic, it's slowly looking forward now.
Thanks.
And that's everything I have.
Okay, any questions, please? If not, Colleen, Correspondents.
I just have one thing, it's from the Manitoba Multi-Materials stewardship Manitoba and it's just the annual report, I'm not going to read through it, it's. Just to let you know, though, in summary, in 2022, Niqwa's participation was 255,240 kilograms of product, which was 44.9%, or 44.9% per capita. 2023, we actually dropped a little bit. We're at 253,210 kgs and we dropped to 44.5. So we're down 0.4% in our recycling efforts. So a lot of communities out there, you look at the numbers in the book and anybody can look at the song line if you're not already hit down. As much as we try to promote this, I don't know why we can't get past 50%. Keep at it.
Okay, moving on to finance. Everyone will have reviewed the June accounts. So the resolution is be it resolved that we approve the accounts June 2024 totaling $3,692,527.95 as reviewed, representing checks 2024-00828 and 2024-01119, but excluding 2024-00911, and 2024-01038. Moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by our classes. All in favor, opposed, carried. Just a few ones. Counselor Gerard, myself, or remove ourselves to the House? Be it resolved that we approve check 2024-00911, 2024-00912 and 2024-0138 for June 2024 for Home Harbor and Niqwa Class from Co-op, totaling $11,601.37. Moved by Counselor Nadeau, seconded by Counselor Potter. All those in favor, it is carried.
Why don't you say three?
Oh, here we go. Okay, so the main financial statement now, be it resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ended May 31st, 2024. Moved by Counselor Costin Chuck, seconded by Counselor Potter. All in favor, opposed, carried. Colleen, utility accounts.
So this is a regular occurrence, as you know that we take the outstanding utility accounts and add them to taxes. Quite often we do this frequently, we just move in and out to make sure we capture those. So I have 13 accounts totaling $3,063.56. So we will take a look tomorrow, see if any of those are paid and only add those that are outstanding and have benefits.
Okay, any questions? Whereas Section 252 of the Municipal Act authorizes a municipality to collect debts in the same manner as a tax may be collected or enforced under the Act, in the warehouse, there are outstanding utility charges which remain unpaid and uncollectible. Therefore, be it resolved that we approve the addition of the following outstanding utility accounts to the tax rule as presented. Moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Counselor Sisley. Any questions? All in favor, opposed, carried. Colleen, unfinished business?
So in previous meeting, you approved subdivision 4437-24-8625 of Heather Matur. This related to taking a single structure that is divided into two different dwelling units. And after we passed that resolution, of course, it was subject to limited conditions. It was determined that there actually, basically, the current fire separation was constructed to meet the required fire resistance rating as a party wall. So there's a different avenue we have to approach this because it doesn't mean the public is, it's called, must speak to that as well, that's fine. But we need a resolution, we're not going to now to actually take a look at that particular addition to the resolution we previously passed to say they have to follow, like under the condominiums act and file a specific agreement to address that as a condominium agreement now. Okay, something want to add?
There was an oversight on our part, it was after the resolution passed, we had a conversation literally the next day realizing a mistake. And we were trying to get it rectified.
So not necessarily a mistake, we didn't amend this last month, so we're just asking for that addition to what we passed to make this get done appropriately.
Okay, any questions? Okay, warehouse council reviewed subdivision 4437-24-8625 of Heather Matur at the June 18th meeting, approving the subdivision subject to conditions. And whereas subsequent to the approval, it has been determined that the two proposed dwelling units are currently not separated by a non-composable wall as required by the building code. More particularly, the current fire separation was constructed to meet the required fire resistance rating as a party wall on a property boundary. However, it does not constitute a firewall under the prescribed method of the building code to meet the intent of the two separate buildings. Therefore, be it resolved that in order to proceed with this subdivision, in addition to the conditions set forth in the resolution of 2024-131, the applicant shall provide or maintain a condominium agreement to address all common elements of the structure and boundary. Right, moved by Counselor Costin Chuck, seconded by Counselor Nadeau. All in favor, opposed, carried.
Actually, maybe just that, this is not unusual. When the local building was brought forward for subdivision, we did the same thing, we addressed it under a condominium agreement. So this is not unusual.
Okay, I guess we can just go ahead with this variation application that we just went through the public hearing for. Be it resolved that we approve the variation application, V03-2024 of Gary Tully, respecting southeast 41515 west to intensify the drainage of the land in complement of the lot grading and drainage by law of the town with the installation of the tile drainage on a large tract of vacant land within the boundaries of the town of Niqwa. And further resolved that this approval will be subject to the terms of the development agreement. So moved by Counselor Gerard, seconded by Counselor Sisley. All in favor, opposed, carried. Colleen, the street closure, over.
So the next two items, I'll just be clear with you, both of them are for street closure requests. The first one on July 20th, which is the day that Counselor Sisley spoke to, that are for the midday street party and it all ties in with the Canada Day activities, which we're pulling carryover. And then the second one will be for a street closure for August 19th for the Rolling Barrage. Is that 9th?
It should be 9th.
Sorry. And the 9th for the Rolling Barrage, that would be decent front of the Legion. The resolution.
Yeah. Okay, be it resolved, we approve the closure of the portion of Burg Street from Mountain to the East property line of Arts Forward, White's Funeral Home on July 20th, 24th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. and in order for Arts Forward to host a midday street party in conjunction with their rafting app. Moved by Counselor Potter, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor, opposed, carried. Next month, be it resolved that we approve the closure of that portion of Brown Avenue from Hamilton Street to Babelson Street on August 9th, 2024 from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. to enable a hosting of the Rolling Barrage. Moved by Counselor Sisley, seconded by Counselor Costin Chuck. All in favor, opposed, carried. Colleen, sitting please.
So we need to update our policy, the board directors of the Evergreen Environmental actually was reviewing the hog ear volumes of the Monte Evergreen and they decided to increase the hog ear tipping fee from $125 per ton plus $5 per ton seller replacement fee and a $25 per ton decommissioning fee. So the new rate will be $131.25 per ton. They're looking at periodically raising the fee, bringing in line with what other vehicles are charging to account for the added labor and planning and dealing with this type and volume of material. And at that point, we felt that they were undercharging. The new rate would be, I'll expect from July 1st, we can have a meeting, so we're asking for you to approve the edits to our policy.
Okay, any questions? Okay, any questions? Be it resolved that we approved the amendment policy. OP-015, disposal on tipping fees at Evergreen to increase the tipping rate for hog hair to $131.25 per ton effective July 1st, 2024. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Counselor Sisley. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Storefront improvements?
So do you want us to turn it up? So the Ni'qua' health center is, they're redoing their painting and doing some carpets and stuff just to clean up the building. And all I'm doing is on, on Mountain Avenue. I've seen, I've been by there, and it looks fabulous already. So they've put in to cover half of those costs.
And carpets on the other side?
Yeah.
Yeah, so half would be, 5% would be $1,770.
Any further questions? Be it resolved that we approved an application to the storefront improvement program submitted by Lisa Bailey of the Old Health Center for exterior paint signage and entrance improvement at 390 Mountain Avenue. Incentive provided 50% of the total cost equating to $1,770. Move by. Counselor Gerard, seconded by Counselor Sisley. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, so this one is also under their storefront improvement program. Counselors Sisley removed herself for conflict, this is for Art's Forward. And it's for replacing windows at a 50% cost equating to the 3,703.30. Any questions? Make the motion, be it resolved?
I have some questions.
Oh, sorry.
Typically, under the storefront improvement incentive program, we... Because this isn't the first time Art's Forward has applied this program, correct?
No, but it would be an application that would fit back in the, I think our policy sets apply to it.
I just wanted some confirmation on that, because, yeah, there's... Yeah, so, you know, I guess it was one that we had discussed, but we still haven't reviewed that policy. This is being a not-for-profit, and typically they can have the avenue applying through the Town of Grants program. But we haven't amended that policy. I think it's one we still should. But, you know, it does meet the criteria, because it is a storefront, but again, it's one of those ones that are not-for-profit. Has an avenue that a private, a private business wouldn't have that. So I'm still, like I said, just seeing this, I mean, I'm in a vote of support of it tonight, because it does meet our policy. I still think it's a policy that needs to be revisited.
Yeah, that is a very good point, actually. Okay, any other, any other thoughts, questions? Okay. Be it resolved that we approved an application for the storefront improvement program submitted by Art's Forward to replace windows on the office and front entrance side of the building located at 293 Mountain Avenue. And sent to provide 50% of the total cost equating to $3,703.30. Move by. Counselor Pottinger, seconded by Counselor Costin Chuck. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Colleen, you file on?
So this is just a process at the moment, as everybody, or maybe doesn't, everybody doesn't know the audience. The town recently purchased 32 acres of land to the, more to the west, but northwest of Ni'qua'. In doing so, it outlined the possibility of actually proceeding with the zoning amendment to a parcel of land that's situated more directly in proximity to the B P zone 5, but north of the railway, and in our discussions of how we get out of the gate on developing those properties, there are so many processes in place to get this ready and repaired. This was an obvious one, so we're proposing that we request the Community and Regional Planning Office to create the bylaw to reclassify that particular parcel, our row number 6400, parcel 856267 in the northeast of 321450, from agricultural restricted to heavy industrial. And then there's a very small piece there as well, we want to reclassify from agricultural commercial to commercial highway. So this basically takes it into the next stage where, as we move along, should something come along industrial-wise and want to develop or commercialize, the main impact is very minimal, and we need to be, since the building's already done.
Okay, any questions? Be it resolved that the council of town of Ni'qua requests Community and Regional Planning to prepare bylaw number 3231-24 to amend the town of Ni'qua zoning bylaw number 3184-18 to reclassify parcel 8, plan 56267 in northeast 321415 from the current AR-R agriculture restricted to residential zone to the proposed MH industrial heavy zone, and the current AR-C agricultural restricted commercial zone to the proposed CH commercial highway zone to progress the growth and development of town of Ni'qua. Move by. Counselor Nadeau, seconded by Counselor Gerard. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Lease agreement, over.
So this is a lease agreement to, so the purchase of those acres actually was a particular landlord, Floyd Murray, loaned. And in our agreement, as we before, we recognize that we can't possibly, you know, cut hay and bale. We can't farm agriculture lease, so we certainly with the law is to allow them to use of the particular properties that are more south of this purchase, of the acres we purchased. And to do so in a manner that'll work very closely and connectively with the town as we develop those acres. So because it's in the A right now, the understanding is that the acres will reduce over time, and they're accepting of that. So if it's a point where it's just too hard for them to take hay off of there, to be agreed, it will just be over. But, so it's a willing partnership by both. We understand we're getting maintenance and upkeep of the property, knowing that we did advance to conceptional design, and eventually start tearing apart the land and prevent it for some kind of residential structures with the ball block and, you know, good play.
Any questions? Be it resolved that we approved entering into the lease agreement with Floyd Murray loaned for the agricultural use of town property of north, north of 321415, parcel 8, plan 56267 CT until such time that is necessary that the town to proceed in developing these lands in Art Forward whole. Move by. Counselor Gerard, seconded by Counselor Pottinger. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Any other business? Seeing none. Be it resolved that the council of town of Ni'qua, we're now adjourned to regular council meeting at 7:37 P.M. Move by. Counselor Pottinger, seconded by Counselor Costin Chuck. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.